Good evening, citizens of Portsmouth. I invite a guest, individuals who are here at the meeting. I want to take a moment to say welcome to our public work session and acknowledge our city manager, Mr. Stephen Carter. I acknowledge our city attorney, Ms. Levonda Graham Williams, and of course, our clerk, Ms. White. I also want to thank all our city staff for being here today and supported this meeting. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the room?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Present.
Dr. Dodson?
Here.
Mr. Hugo?
Present.
Mr. Moody?
Here.
Ms. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Tillage?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here. Mr. Carter, sir?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Carter. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good to see everybody here this evening. We have a couple of presentations for you. The first one is traffic calming discussion. We've installed some traffic calming in our Waterview area, and that has kind of launched a new era in Portsmouth where everybody wants traffic calming. So we want to try to put some definition around how that process can work to ensure everybody has a fair opportunity to have their needs assessed and some way to have it objectively reviewed. Next will be a presentation on the Portsmouth Public Schools Keppeler Reserve Fund ordinance. That is something that we'll have to deal with this time of the year. This is a brand-new ordinance that was adopted by council last December. So I want to remind everybody of the workings of the ordinance, how it works, and why it was necessary. And finally, we'll talk about some of the legislative initiatives. But first, we have our city engineer, Mr. James Wright. He's going to lead our discussion on traffic calming. Ms. Wright, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, Mayor.
Evening, Ms. Wright.
Vice Mayor, member of the City Council. This evening, I'm going to lead a discussion about traffic calming. So traffic calming is intended to slow traffic on residential streets without restricting There's a difference between traffic control and traffic calming, although traffic control can provide some level of traffic calming. Traffic control devices are signs which are intended to warn, to advise, they're regulatory in nature. Traffic calming is actually part of the design for the street. They can be installed when the street is going in, or the street can be retrofitted to have those devices installed. So a perfect type of a traffic control device is to communicate while traffic calming measure, once again, is part of the design of the street. Residential speeding concerns that we typically receive are from your wider streets, the streets that are more straight in nature, think Streets over in Cavalier Manor, you have some wider streets over there, the one that runs by the middle school, Shenandoah and Waterview. Let's see, some of the streets in Old Town were wider, they've been retrofitted. Streets in, some in West Haven in particular, think Scott Street near the Walmart. School zone speed enforcement has actually reduced speeds and had a significant impact in those residential areas where we have schools. The typical requests that we usually see in those areas were for additional signage, additional pavement markings, check, make sure that the flashers are working, are the flashers timed properly, things like that. Citizens will typically call in, request for stop signs to help control speeding. You'll see the next slide, that stop signs are not intended to control speed. And one of the most frequent requests we currently see now is the watch for children sign. We get about six to eight requests per year. Some people have called to ask, you see signs, if you see a sign up that says child autism or deaf child or something like that, that is not a sign that's been installed by the city. There's no way for the driver to know what the condition of that child is, so that's why the sign, appropriate sign, is watch for children. And we typically get about three requests per year for some sort of speed bump, some sort of in pavement design. So as I just mentioned, stop signs are not intended to control speed. The federal manual, manual uniform, traffic control devices indicate such. To actually install a stop sign, there's a specific type of engineering study that you have to do to make sure that that intersection meets all the warrants and that you're not doing any adverse harm to that intersection by installing that device. And then you see a couple of things where stop signs have limited impact on actually impacting speed. So there are a couple of types of traffic control, traffic calming measures. They're non-intrusive measures. You see up here, you see the speed limit sign that actually lets you know what speed you're traveling at as you approach it. You see in pavement markings with speed limit, lets you know what the actual speed limit is on that roadway. You see a measure here where there's actually pavement marking to basically narrow the width of the actual roadway. Narrowing the width of a roadway actually serves to help decrease speed. The wider the roadway, the more likely it is that someone wants to actually go faster. So as you go into a neighborhood, you can do a road die, as you'll see in an example a little later on, in Mount Vernon in Port Norfolk, where there is no additional signage to speak, no in pavement measures, but there's traffic calming done by just pavement marking alone. And you see the speed limit sign there with additional increase fine. These non-physical measures are low-cost measures. They don't physically restrict driver movement, and they have shown in the past in various studies that they can actually reduce speeding by approximately five miles an hour. And typically, if you're going to actually add an increase fine, like you see in that, it has to be done by the body and has to get a lot of public support to actually increase the fine, and that's actually part of the traffic calming process. So there are horizontal, vertical, physical measures that actually either impact the horizontal, the width of the road, or actually whether the road is narrowed or not. So to the left, you see what they call a chicane. There are medians set at certain distances. In the lower, right under that, you see how it looks, it basically makes a road drive like an S pattern. You see a mini roundabout, a raised crosswalk, a speed table up top, and a speed hump down bottom. You see a bulb out or a part where the end of the block is actually pushed out. These geometric improvements, whether they're vertical, horizontal, they tend to have success in slowing speed, but they're more costly to implement, and they're typically permanent in nature. Vertical deflections, speed humps, raised intersections, speed tables are typically least preferred by emergency services because of the impact on, say, you have an ambulance coming through or fire truck coming through, they hit that as they're either en route or leaving a call. It could impact the equipment on the apparatus. And if you're looking at typical costs, and this is without traffic control or mobilization, speed humps run between 2,000 and 3,000. Speed table anywhere from 5,000 to 10,000. Raised intersection could start right around 25,000 on up, depending on how wide the intersection is. A chicane, which is those little median inserts, you see about 5,000 per, so about, you typically do two or three, so you get about 15,000 per block. Raised median, they're smaller, about $10,000. Curve extensions, depending on the size of it, could range anywhere from 2,000 to 10,000. That just gives you a little bit of the range. Where pavement markings are a lot less, a lot less expensive, signs are a lot less expensive. The speed display signs are a little bit more pricey, in the $10,000 to $12,000 range per. And another thing that I didn't mention, on the non-intrusive devices, they fall somewhere in between. If you think of a community gateway, like in Bydaway Manor, they have the entrance monument, but that entrance monument is actually in pavement. So that sort of discourages people from actually speeding through the neighborhood because you have to go around that monument before you actually get into the neighborhood. So consideration for traffic calming. So you have to define what is an eligible street. You're looking at the type of street, you're looking at the amount of traffic on that street. Typically, it's on a residential, on a residential street. It may sometimes be on a collector roadway. And then there has to be some sort of documentation of that actually perceived speeding problem that's typically verified through an engineering study. And then what is the community involvement? Is it Ms. Jones just calling and letting you know the problem? Is it civic league? Is it brought to you by some other entity that has noticed the problem and brings it to the city to take a look at? There are different levels, and if you'll see at the last slide, different communities that have traffic calming programs look at it differently. There's an evaluation process, looks at traffic, looks at speed, looks at the actual type of roadway, width of the roadway, visibility. There's accident data analysis, and all that goes into making some sort of determination about which measures are appropriate for that roadway and how you progress through those measures. What's natural, you start with the least expensive and work your way on up through that process. And then, as I said at the bottom, what are those appropriate solutions? So some of the terms that we use in traffic calming when we're looking at a study, so what is the service area? What is that area that is impacted by the speeding? So you have the street in question, how far from that street are you looking to define that service area? Is it the entire neighborhood, just a portion of the neighborhood? What is that service area? What is the road rate geometry? That's going to impact what measures you're actually going to be looking at for the roadway? Is it a really wide street? Is it a narrow street? Is it an offset street? Those things are going to play into it. What's the vehicle count per day? So how many vehicles are traveling down this roadway per day? Then there's 85 percentile speed. So your residential speed in Virginia is 25 miles per hour. Your 85 percentile speed, if you're looking at a situation, say I'm in Cavalier Manor, and I'm looking at the 85 percentile speed, and I do a speed study. The results may show that 85% of the traffic on this road is doing 30 miles per hour. So 30 miles per hour is your 85 percentile speed. Then you're going to look at your average speed. So what is the average speed of everybody during that study time, during that area on the roadway? So now you have the average speed, 85 percentile speed, and the posted, the known residential If those, if those speeds are without, are above the residential speed by a certain amount, different localities do a different, some are eight miles per hour, some are 10 miles per hour. If it's within that window, then you have a problem that you need to address through some traffic calming measure. However, there's another factor that you take a look at. Say that the 85 percentile speed is not within that eight to 10 mile an hour range, and the average speed is not within that eight to 10 mile an hour range. What is your maximum observed speed and how many people are near that? My 85 percentile speed is, say, 30 miles an hour. My average speed is 32 miles an hour. Say my maximum observed speed is 50, and I have a number of incidents where folks are near that 50 miles an hour. Well, I can't necessarily just use the 85 percentile speed and the average speed. I'll also have to look at that maximum observed speed because that's a problem. And what you're, what you're doing when you go to install these traffic calming devices is to bring not only the 85 percentile average speed down, but those maximum observed speeds somewhere down closer to the 85 percentile speed, if that makes sense. So how do you implement a traffic calming program? Well, there's public education. So with traffic calming, there are pros: increased safety, livability, and enhanced conditions for pedestrians and cyclists. But there's also cons: potential delays and impacts to emergency vehicles if you're putting a speed table, raised intersection, traffic hump, whatever it is, in pavement, there's going to be noise as cars go over that device. And then there's public expectations. What is, what does the public expect when you install these measures? How much is the speed going to decrease? Well, the speed decreased on my street, but I live two streets over, and my speed now all of a sudden shot up. So during that public education piece, are you providing all that information to the residents so they're aware of what's about to happen once you go down this road? And then there's, and then there's the cost. So every measure that you install is going to have that initial cost, but then it's going to have the maintenance cost. So you're going to have to maintain those signs, you're going to have to maintain bulb outs, you're going to have to maintain speed humps that so that they are, continue to function as they are intended when they were installed. Once again, the non-physical measures cost less than the ones that actually go physically in the road. Enforcement is traditionally the primary means for addressing speeding problems, and it's the most effective means to address speeding problems. So we do have a draft traffic calming policy, and it reflects some of those things you've seen in previous slides. So eligibility. We're looking primarily at residential streets, but we do have considerations for collector streets. We also have a component that deals with the average on the road. We're looking at an option to actually lower the residential speed limit, and 2024 General Assembly passed a law that allows localities to drop the residential speed limit to no less than 15 miles per hour without, without an engineering study. So we have options to actually lower the speed limits in residential areas. We have a threshold for petition, 60% for initial measures, 75% for physical devices. We have, where we're looking at a defined, a defined service area as part of the engineering study that we did. Phases, we look though from education to non-intrusive to enforcement, and then there's physical devices. And prior to getting to that last component of physical devices, there's a review that's required by emergency services to determine what the impacts will be, potential impacts will be to their apparatus and their service. City funds, the first phases, we're still sorting through when we get to that last phase of in pavement, in roadway. Will the city fund, or will there be some cost sharing with the neighborhoods? And should residents not like it, want it to go away? Then there's a component that the residents have to pay to have that removed. And then there's evaluation period after, six months, 12 months, with those metrics being, as I mentioned before, looking at the 85 percentile speed, the mean speed, and the maximum speed, seeing how effective those devices are at bringing those measures down. So traffic calming in the city of Portsmouth. Scott Street up above with the, with the speed limit sign that flashes back to you. Several areas have the watch for children sign. In school zones, we see the speed limit signs. This is Waterview, the recently installed speed table, and also the pavement measures that show stop ahead. Couple of spots here on Washington Street. As you walk down to the left, you have the median in the neighborhood. As you get a little bit more into that transitional area, you have medians with parking actually in the middle and on the side. You also have curve extensions. A little bit further down on Washington, you have angled parking intended to actually reduce speed. This is Glen Sheila right there on Hartford with the mini median. Court Street, not Court Street, but County Street with parking introduced. And at the very bottom is Mount Vernon in Port Norfolk with a demonstration project where you introduce pavement markings to actually slow speed. So you have parking on both sides, bicycle lanes, and crosswalks introduced from Bayview down to High Street. So these localities here have traffic calming programs. They vary in nature, but they all typically have the same components. Newport News and Chesapeake, they're initiated by citizens. They require petitions or letters of support from either the HOA or the civic league. Typically, they start off with the least impactful and progress through to enforcement and then to in pavement. Virginia Beach is a combination of city C and community-driven. They target one street per neighborhood, starts with selective enforcement, progresses to increased fines, and then moves to physical measures that require petition. Norfolk is a little more advanced and a little more data-driven. They actually have a speed reduction program and a safety action plan. As you just recently approved our Safe Streets for All Action Plan. They have task force and prioritization for different measures for different areas actually as part of that plan. And those priority areas are programmed, are working to get programmed into their CIP, and that's how they address traffic calming in Norfolk. So for the discussion, and we're looking for general feedback for the, I know you went through a lot with the information I just presented, but how should Portsmouth approach, approach the issue of traffic calming? Should we address issues on a case-by-case basis? Should we have a, should we formalize our program? Should our program mirror some of our sister cities' programs? Based on the conversation and some of the things you've seen here tonight, looking for some feedback about how you think we should approach this issue?
I'm sorry, should I address you, Mr. Carter, on this?
Okay. Well, I'm glad to see it finally getting implemented. I know that the Waterview neighborhood has been waiting since the 1960s, they've been complaining. So I'm concerned that we have a procedure that citizens can understand how they can interact with this process. I'm glad to see it here. I just want to see, they know clearly how to interact with it. Is there a forum, what letters are required, what committee do they contact? It is becoming an issue that I'm glad we're addressing, but how? Right. Well, that's what this policy would be all about, is formalizing what that process would be. What we're thinking right now is that citizens engage us based on what they think they see in their neighborhood. We go out, do a traffic study. Based on the traffic study, they will either pass or fail as far as you're eligible to have some type of speed coming based on the traffic that we see versus, hey, this is really a perceived problem and not a problem that we can measure. Should we move further in the process? There, we're thinking there should be some engagement with the people that would be affected by it, meaning if we think we're going to put some speed tables on your street, then the people in the neighborhood need to determine whether or not they really want speed tables on their street, you know? And if they pass that muster, then we come back and then figure out which traffic calming measure would actually work best in that neighborhood. And one of the things you talked about also is, we put the speed tables out or whatever traffic calming measure out, and then that same group that said they did want it, now say they don't want it, all right? What's the mechanism to get rid of that? And we're thinking that that should be funded by those that want it out versus...
Of course.
Right. That's, that's kind of what we're thinking right now. That's not, you know, formalize, the reason we're bringing this forward is kind of get some ideas from this group as to what you think the process should be. That's what we think the process should be, but we want your input before we formalize a policy.
I just note there's, I just note there's a lot of frustrated neighborhoods out there, and they're going to welcome us expediting getting this process in place.
Right. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Vice Mayor Moody?
Well, my thought on it is, if there's not a problem, we don't need a remedy. So I like the case-by-case basis versus one size fits all. I think there are neighborhoods that, that need it. I do support the need for a process on how they go about getting it. I drive across the ones in Waterview twice a day, and you can, you can drive across them at 25 miles an hour, and you don't have to brake, and it's not a huge bump. Anything above that, I could see where you probably wouldn't do it but one time. So, I mean, it doesn't, I don't think it impedes traffic. I think it just makes you go to the speed limit, and not much above it, which to me, it's serving its purpose.
Absolutely.
But I do, I do support a case-by-case basis with well-defined procedures on how a community goes about getting it. I like the petition thing. I know some communities have civic leagues, but a lot of times civic leagues are just a few people versus, you know, a large sector that's going to be affected by the, by the traffic calming measures. So that, I mean, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Mayor. So I think just listening to just some of the issues and that first question, how do we approach the issue? One of my biggest concerns is citizens understanding whatever the process is right now and not, that not being equal. So how did Waterview go about getting their traffic study requested and done versus some neighborhoods where you might not have that same civic engagement, but there is still a problem? So how much falls on the, I think we need to consider how much falls on the city to monitor incidences, any type of data, incidences, accidents, calls, maybe even data from the police with speeding tickets, so that we are proactive and not just relying on the citizens to then request a traffic study? Because that's where you can, you know, face some inequities for neighborhoods that, again, have civic engagement versus neighborhoods that don't. And so that's something I would like us to consider. I think you mentioned Norfolk had a risk approach or safe sectors that they might have rated or some kind of way?
So Norfolk is part of their Safe Streets for All Action Plan, defined, basically went out as part of that process, similar to our Safe Streets for Action Plan. And that was one of the, the things that came out of that was the, the need for some sort of measure to provide speed reduction for safety. Because the Safe Streets for Action Plan is all about zero accidents, zero deaths.
Right.
So it's pedestrians, cyclists, it's motorists. It's looking at all of those aspects in the roadway and coming up with the best solutions for all of those. So what are the best solutions for, on a road, to basically make it safe for everyone? So if you have a wide road, do you have a large residential point where people are walking up and down the road? Do you need sidewalk? Do you need crosswalks? Or is it a transition where you're going from one area to another? So do you need bike lanes?
Right.
And so that is how they developed, based on my observation, how they developed their program. And then in 2024, with the General Assembly allowing you to reduce the residential speed limit, that's also now part of the program. And so I think their target speed reduction is from 25 to 20. I don't know, and I haven't seen, if they're considering any areas for 15 miles an hour, but that is still an option, and that is your limit. So you can go from 25 to 15, and that is, once again, without the need for an engineering study.
Okay. Yeah, I would propose that maybe we do a combination of, like, the city somehow being proactive of identifying where traffic study needs to be by whatever, whatever metric or measure we designate or, you know, from your department, Ms. Wright, and also a way for citizens to request. Like, for example, I mean, you all are familiar with Crystal Lake, that is a speed trap, like, but they, they didn't know about the process. There's another request from a citizen recently with Evergreen and Watts, or, you know, I'm sure there's been, you know, some issues... sure there's been, you know, some issues with speeding on Cedar Road. So there's, I think there's just a way that we should combine or overlay, like, how we identify speed concern areas and we initiate studies versus how citizens initiate study. And my other concern was that citizen petition requirement. And when you said 60% for initial measures or 75% for devices, do you mean 60% of the residents that live on the street or that...
60% of the residents in that service area. So the defined service area. So if I'm on, say, Roosevelt, so, and I'm looking at a specific block on Roosevelt, so my service area is going to be a few blocks this way and a few blocks this way, unless I'm in a smaller neighborhood, Cavalier Manor is large. So if I'm a smaller neighborhood, say, like I'm off of West Norfolk Road, and that neighborhood has a jail in, smaller neighborhood, so that whole neighborhood would be the service area because that's a smaller street. That's a smaller collection of streets. So it's there on the side of the neighborhood and then actually where that street sits.
And what, so the neighborhood is a mixture of, like, let's not say all homeowners, homeowners and renters? Is it, needs to be signed by the homeowners or just whoever lives there currently? Like, that's a consideration too, because...
Asking my opinion?
Yes.
So my opinion would be, because it's a problem that you're recognizing because you live there, it's the resident. If I'm renting that place to someone, I don't live there, I have no idea, speed, what happens at night or whatever, so I don't necessarily think that that person necessarily needs to be the one to sign the petition because he's not experiencing, he or she's not experiencing it every day. As in, the resident that's there sees it every day, they should be the one with the ability to sign that petition.
Okay, a street I'm thinking of, like Elm, for example, that, so someone would need to get 60% petition signed or 75% in that case of, for a traffic study or initiating this traffic calming policy, the way that we're thinking about this now.
So you're typically looking at either one or two blocks. So you say Elm, I'm not looking at the whole stretch of Elm particularly. And the other thing is, certain parts of Elm, while they have a residential component, aren't necessarily residential streets.
Okay.
So it's residential streets and some collectors.
Okay.
So it's any arterial roads, Airline, Greenwood Drive, Frederick Boulevard, wouldn't qualify for a traffic calming program. Whole entirely different kind of study, whole entirely different kind of analysis to see what those impacts are of speeding on those streets versus a traffic calming program to look at specifically residential streets and certain collectors.
Okay. Well, I'm done. My only, I guess, input is that whatever policy we do consider to, whether we don't consider what, but always remember that there's neighborhoods that don't have as strong a civic engagement, and we have to make sure that just because they don't have citizens emailing us, not, you know, calling us, that that doesn't mean that there's not a problem. So we have to somehow account for that as well. That's my input. Thank you.
Councilman Hugo, so you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. So I agree with the comments that have been made so far. Definitely think we need to have a process. I think there should be some clear thresholds defined in that process. So whether the threshold is, how many people need to complain before you do a speed study? What are the thresholds inside the speed study that would trigger either saying you don't have a problem or you do have a problem and where you go from here? Whether it's civic league engagement or petitions along the street block, again, there should be some prescribed definition so that we get more consistency. Because I think part of the reason that this is coming up is because we get the phone calls and the emails, and then the very next thing is, you get the phone calls and the emails, and then you get the phone calls and the emails, and we're kind of all over the place in terms of how the process now gets initiated to even go take a look at the problem. So, you know, I appreciate that there may be some frustration out there that Waterview got something that nobody else got, but to Councilman Dodson's point, Waterview has been frustrated with speeding along the Shenandoah Cut Through for quite a long time and have been waiting and promised by your predecessors to get something done. Appreciate that we got something done finally to help them out, but they're not the only ones out there that are suffering the speed problems. So the more we can define how to initiate and what the thresholds are to take action, the better off, I think, we'll be in engaging our neighbors.
Councilman Tillage, then, Councilman, right, Councilwoman Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. So I see there's a need for such a policy or procedure. The only concern that I have is with every neighborhood or every street, there's going to be different levels of concern about how fast is too fast. One street might think 15 miles an hour is too fast, another street might think 35 miles an hour is too fast. And so I see it becoming one of those things where every street in Portsmouth is going to want something on their street. So I think if we were to develop, similar to the Norfolk Safe Streets for All program, where the city takes the proactive approach of identifying what the high areas are throughout the city based on maybe traffic stops or based on accident reports, and we do have these new cameras that we have out in certain areas, and I'm sure those can probably help identify some areas as well, on how we can address those issues. But I think just having people do a request, I think that's going to turn into a can of worms, because everybody's going to want something on their street. So if we can maybe to develop a strategic approach where we're going into the community, city-led, similar to maybe Rock Block, where we're leading the program to identify these areas, and then to develop a working group to develop a strategy to address those. I just think we're going to open up a huge can of worms that we're not going to be able to fulfill, so.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Brad.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Mr. Wright. A couple of thoughts popping into my head while I listen to everybody's comments. Agree that we need a process. Obviously, a process will help us with a lot of different problems, and this is one that's popping up. Do we have a Safe Streets for All Action Plan currently? I know we just pushed that through. So what does our plan look like, or will we, what will we be using that funding for?
It's a number of measures and a number of things to improve safety. We're actually in that most of it focused on pedestrian safety and accidents. I have to revisit the plan to see what it says with respect to speeding, but it was mostly focused on reducing accidents and making streets safer for pedestrians and then being more inclusive for all users. The Safe Streets for All Action Plan needed to be done and adopted by the city so that we could apply for funding there. So now that we have the adopted plan, we can do things identified in the plan that we want to implement, move forward. We can submit funding to have someone else pay for those things that have been identified in the plan.
So that funding has been approved, and now we're ready to place it to problem areas? Am I understanding that correctly?
The plan has been approved.
The plan has been approved.
That allows you to apply for funding.
Okay.
Funding from the federal government.
Okay, understood. Okay, thank you. Presumably, we know a lot of the problem areas already from comments coming to us, from police, from, I'm assuming, Mr. Wright, you travel all across the city, you probably know some of the hotspots. Would you say that you have an idea on...
It's a mixed bag. Some of the concerns that come in are specific to a certain issue. As I mentioned, they'll request additional speeds, a stop sign to help control the speed. And then the next phrase they'll mention that people run in stop sign. So we're not going to open up a stop sign now to help you control intersections where people already aren't necessarily obeying the stop sign. So that's a different issue than a specific traffic calming issue. In school zones, I mentioned that, could we get more pavement markings? Could we get more signage? Are the flashers working? Are the flashers timed appropriately? Now that there's speed enforcement, we don't get any of those anymore. Wider streets typically are the ones where it's pretty much a raceway. On certain times of day, especially if there's no parking on either side of the street, it's posted as 25, it says it's 25, but looking around, I don't see any cops, so we're not necessarily going to do 25. Going to go at a faster pace. So we know which streets are those wider ones. It's typically, so if I'm going, so take Waterview, for example, one that you're familiar with, I'm coming from Churchland, and I want to go to West Haven or Midtown. I'm going to come up Shenandoah, go down Caroline, then go whatever way I want to go, go to City Park. Or I'm coming from one of those areas, and I want to go to Churchland, I'll cut through and I'll go to that light right there to make the left to go to Churchland. Since it was brought up, Waterview has had an issue for a while. They actually had the PDC do a study, say, back in the 80s or early 90s. That study was actually focused around closing down the causeway. And there were all kinds of implications as far as impacts to other roads, configuration of other roads. Since that time, they've had several speed studies that were done that came to the same conclusion, that the actual 85 percentile speed and the mean speed weren't the issue. It's that maximum observed speed is the issue and the high number of people with that maximum observed speed way beyond that, basically your normal residential speed. And you see a number of treatments there. You see pavement markings, you see other things that were implemented to you, and there's been enforcement by the sheriffs, there's been enforcement by police. The speed tables and the raised intersections, they're pilot. Most of the traffic comment that you see in the city actually came along as part of another project or a CIP project, with the exception of the project on Mount Vernon. That was, I think that was a pilot as well, and there was some sort of grant funding for that particular project, and may have actually been CDP Ju funds, but I'm not sure. I have to go back and research my notes. But specifically for impavement traffic common, we don't necessarily have the funding set aside, whether operational or CIP for that at this point. It comes along as part of another project, whether it's, as you saw, County Street, with some marking there as part of the downtown project, as you see other streets that are getting retrofitted, the raise grant. So High Street, it'll get bike lanes, it'll get parking, it'll get medians and other things. That's traffic calming. That's a retrofit to a street, but it's not funded specifically for traffic calming. Just as you go through and implement all these other strategies and things as part of the project, as part of the street, you end up, the end result is traffic calming. So as part of the discussion is that, which is that next piece, or well, down a little bit, you say, funding and equity. How do you get to that component as you're looking at this overall program?
So one other question for you, Mr. Wright or Mr. Carter. Obviously, this comes down to an extent to enforcement, which we've said with some other issues also. So police response in neighborhoods, not just in Portsmouth, anywhere, I'm imagining is difficult to have police in some of these pocket neighborhoods and actually catch speeders as they go. So what do the police tell, have we engaged the police department in this conversation? Do they, are there some tips and tricks that we might not know about that they use to...
They do do targeted enforcement.
People power?
They do do targeted enforcement. A lot of times, you'll see the stops, the speed limit signs with feedback. We have the ones that are solar powered that we install. The police have the ones that are actually on the trailer that you see out as you're going down the streets that flash the speed limit, on the says, the speed limit is this, this is your speed limit.
They can't issue tickets or anything?
It does not issue tickets, but it does promote awareness of, you may not realize you're going that fast.
True.
Until you see it pop up in front of you. But to your point, if I go down that street and I, okay, I see it, now all of a sudden I adjust my behavior, but I don't see that there's any enforcement, there's a potential that I may revert back to not obeying the speed limit. So they do do target, they can't be in the neighborhood all the time, but they do go to these neighborhoods and do some targeted enforcement for speed. I know they've been in Cavalier Manor, talking to some of the residents out there and some of PD, they've done targeted enforcement in Cavalier Manor and some of the other neighborhoods. They've done it in Waterview. But that only lasts for so long. And once people realize that the enforcement component is not necessarily there, they have a tendency to revert back to bad behavior. And since the pandemic, speeding, obeying traffic signs, obeying traffic lights, in general, driver behavior has gotten progressively worse, and it hasn't come back down since the pandemic.
Well, to your point with the school zones, I mean, that was very effective when tickets went out for that. Don't want to take any more time. So last point, I will always draw this back to communication. This was extremely helpful, I think, for all of us to hear what the process is so far, what we have in place, and the pros and cons, which I think a lot of people are probably unaware of. So the more we can communicate where we're going with this, I think, obviously, the better. Thank you.
You're welcome. Vice Mayor Moody.
I think the key's going to be documentation on whether there is a problem. You know, if you're out in your yard working or standing still, it's hard to determine how fast someone's going and the difference between 25 and 35. I dare say that the average person, me included, if you're standing still and see a car go by, it always seems like it's speeding to me because I'm standing still. So I think the documentation is going to be extremely important. Our, as Councilman Tillage said, we better be prepared to have a lot of calming. Everybody's neighborhood street is going to want calming if we don't really determine whether there is a problem or not. And that's going to be the key. So hopefully, we'll be able to do that on an equitable basis, as Councilwoman Thomas said, that, you know, is, what's the process? Who do I contact? I think they're speeding on my road, so who do I contact? What's the procedure? Is it a petition or what? That, I'd like to see staff come back with those recommendations so we can hopefully further massage it before we dive into it.
Mr. Carter, so you have the floor.
One of the things that, and you don't have to make a decision now, but I'm hearing different versions of this. One is, hey, city, go study all this and tell us where it's supposed to be. The other version is, case by case, somebody comes and we react that way. I've been to other cities where we've enacted traffic calming in the manner that we're talking about. Neither one works. That's why your citizens are concerned. If the city decides where it's going to be, there are going to be people that said, hey, why did you choose them and you didn't choose me? If we allow people to choose their own, there are going to be people that said, hey, well, I didn't get a chance. So it's just going to be a matter of which one we're willing to defend. We've got to make a choice, and we're going to have to defend one or the other. The other thing that I would say to you is, from my experience with this, is Vice Mayor Moody is right. It's going to proliferate. Now, having said that, and Mr. Wright talked about this briefly, there is no traffic calming budget. What we've, I've seen done before is there's a certain amount of money set aside, there's a window to open, get your request in, make the studies, and when the money's out, traffic common stops until the next budget year. There will be a lot of requests, and there is no budget for it right now. So those are considerations that we have to make. But again, that piece about how it's going to be operated, I've seen both. Neither one's going to satisfy your citizens. So it's just... So it's just going to be a matter of pick one and bite the bullet with the rest.
And you make a valid point because I do know I've gotten responses already from citizens over in Waterview, and they're not happy with what has been done. And so it begs the question, I mean, at what point, you can't satisfy everybody. If you want traffic calming and we've done it to the degree that we're going to do it, taking into consideration all those things, you know, it is going to be what it's going to be. And I think that the approach that we're taking is an appropriate approach. I'm interested in hearing what you guys bring back in and seeing that. But look, at the end of the day, safety is important. We want to listen to our citizens, but also that you're not going to please everybody. And that's just the hard part of it. I get calls repeatedly about people having issues with the traffic in their community, which we welcome and we usually forward it to your department, sir, and you and your team take the appropriate action. But having a policy in place and then being able to steer people in the direction that it needs to go is a good thing.
Yeah, one more thing?
You have the floor, sir.
Also, my experience is traffic calming only comes traffic on that street. What normally happens is people find another street that they're going to drive on. So that's kind of where the proliferation comes from. You put it on one street, detour to another street, so now those people want it. You put it on those streets, they detour to a different street, now those people want it. That's kind of how that proliferation works.
Absolutely. Well, thank you all for that conversation and thank you, Mr. Ray. We'll look forward to getting some direction.
Will do.
As we go forward. You, Mr. Manager. You have the floor, sir.
The next one is about Portsmouth Public Schools Capital Reserve Fund Ordinance, and I will make that presentation myself, sir.
Maybe we need to take our honorary street naming thing to speed bumps the name of the street. You know, the other thing I was going to mention, these mufflers that they got on their cars nowadays, they may be doing 30 and they sound like if they're doing 100 miles an hour. That's another issue, perception versus reality.
All right, our Portsmouth Public Schools Capital Reserve Fund Ordinance. In December of 2024, the city council passed a special ordinance that created the capital, the school capital reserve fund. It's basically a savings account for Portsmouth Public Schools, but it's not like your regular checking account that pays, that pays everyday things. This count is meant only for big projects that improve schools or fix emergencies. Think of it as like a piggy bank that you don't, that you can't open for snacks or for toys, but you can only use it when you need something that's really important, like fixing your roof, buy a new car. The schools may soon ask if they have leftover money from last year to put in this bank account. So it's important that we just understand what the rules of it is. Some of us was around and some of us was not when that ordinance was enacted. So this is just an oversight, overview really, of what the ordinance is, what the mechanics of it, how it works, and if it will affect us this year. This particular ordinance was authorized under the Virginia State Code 22 dot 1 dash 100. Again, we adopted this in, on December 10, 2024. But the real question is why we're talking about this tonight? And there's three main reasons. First, remind council that, of what the ordinance says because it was passed last December. And you know how details fade over time, so we just want to remind everybody what this is all about.
That's right.
Second is to review the rules about how the money gets into the fund and how it comes out of the fund. These rules make sure that the money is saved and spent in a way that is fair, legal, and useful for long-term projects. And third, because we expect a ask soon from the school system, want to make sure that everybody's aware of what the process is so nobody's unaware and start down or thinking that there's a different process in place. There's actually, there's actually an established process this year and we like to stay with that process where possible. Key provisions of the ordinance is, first of all, the source, the annual deposit limit, the overall cap, and any excess funds of what the ordinance allocates. The money that we're talking about is only local funds appropriated by the city council that remains unspent. It has nothing to do with any state funds that they may get or federal funds that they may get. This is strictly only funds allocated by the city of Portsmouth from our general fund to the school system. The annual deposit limit is $7 million. The overall cap is $21 million. So how does that work? In any one school year or any one year, not necessarily a school year, in any one year, the max that can be allocated to this capital fund is $7 million. No matter how much is left over, the max that can be allocated to this particular fund is $7 million. If in the course of allocating this money over time, and it's not being spent down, the max that can go into that account overall is $21 million. Now, that doesn't mean over the lifetime of this account, that just means the balance in that account can't get more than $21 million. That mean we can allocate $7 million every year, but if they spend $7 million during the next course of the next year, then we can allocate another $7 million. So that has, that's not a lifetime balance, this is just a current balance. The current balance cannot exceed $21 million. Excess funds, anything above $7 million is supposed to remain with the city unless this council decide that they want to allocate more than $7 million. The ordinance allows you to do that, but that is a choice that the council have to make. If the council don't make it, don't take any action, then the ordinance is what the ordinance is and it will function in the way that it's designed. How can it be used? Can we use capital projects, emergency capital needs? It's not available for operational or what we would consider recurring costs. Recurring costs are like maintenance things that's supposed to happen all the time, just regular things that you would put in your normal operating budget. And the interest earned in this account remains in the fund. And does not, I mean, make sure I say that, that does not count toward the $21 million limit. So if there is actually $21 million and whatever else because funds have been invested, we don't, we don't want to allow them to just sit there. They'll be invested so they will earn money. As it earns money, the money that it earns don't count toward the cap of the $21 million. Capital projects, or, and we have a school capital project list, or those things that are actually listed on that list. So they can pick any one of those projects, move that project forward or accelerate the project if necessary and when there are funds that's there. Emergency capital items would be things like a new roof, new AC, things that's not allowed, anything that's like day-to-day operating costs or salaries. Salaries is not included as a capital cost. When you're looking for capital costs, you're looking at things that have a long-term life, not a short-term life. Oversight and accountability. First of all, there's an annual audit that must take place and these funds must be accounted for in that annual audit. That audit is due on the 31st, and if the audit is not done, there are some triggers that will take place. And one of those triggers is a notice from the city manager's office to the school system that you have not met the goals of the ordinance. They have an opportunity to fix that and come into compliance, but they'll have to give a detailed, I guess, plan for how they're going to come back into compliance. And that plan has to also be approved. What's the council's role? Approve things greater than $7 million if this body so desires to do so. Make sure that the things that you do approve meets the capital use only. And if we get to the point where there is non-compliance, I will absolutely make sure that this board is aware of it that way. When it comes time to reappropriate, to do anything else that this ordinance governs, any non-compliance will be considered as a factor for moving forward. So if you do reappropriate, you have decisions over how that money is going to be reappropriated. So based on all this, why am I talking about this and what do anticipate? Anticipate that there would be a request for reallocation of funds. And if there is a request for reallocation of funds, the council needs to determine whether it was then or above the $7 million limit, how it's going to be used and make sure that it's going to be used in a capital nature and whether Portsmouth Public Schools is in good compliance status. Because this is the first year of this ordinance, it's difficult for them to not be in compliance status at this point. So the only thing that we really have to worry about is, and if that amount exceeds $7 million, how do you want to act based on that? That's a quick overview of what that ordinance is all about. Again, it was passed on December 10th last year, and I just wanted to bring it back to your attention, kind of remind you of what it is and how it will be executed based on the information that's in the ordinance.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Carter. Help me understand, where did the $7 million and the $21 million, how was that derived?
Based on conversation between myself and Dr. Brexey, we agree that those are appropriate numbers for it.
Okay, so that was mutually agreed upon?
That was mutually agreed.
Okay, very good.
Councilman Hugel, sir, you have the floor.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. And thanks for numbering the slides.
Nah. It depends, is this a good thing or bad thing?
So my question is to the attorney, is there anything in state code that is more definition than what we have here?
That's where we adopted it from. It originated, the authority originated from the state code. It was a fairly new statute, so no, there's not much meat to it. We can do a quick run to see if there's some case law that may have defined things a little bit better. Generally, it makes it a little more murky. But it really is just the authority for us to hold, to be, have a holding pattern for what we want to do with this money that happens, not only in our jurisdiction, but in other jurisdictions. So I think we hit the nail pretty closely to it. There's probably no more sharpness we can get at this point, but if we do, we'll still, we'll do a report back if we find anything.
Councilwoman Thomas, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thank you. It's similar to Councilman Hugel's question for the 22 dot 1 dash 100. In here, it says something about school board will, let me refer to the slide, hold on. It's slide number six and slide number seven. So non-compliance triggers.
Yes.
City manager notice remediation plan. And then for council's role, it says that we will evaluate PPS compliance, we're reporting and auditing. What is that? Like, what are the compliance standards there?
The compliance standard is, first of all, that it's used by, used for.
Those projects.
Capital projects.
Okay.
And that there's an audit due on the 31st of each year. Audit must include this amount and must be turned in on time.
Okay, so they're third-party audit, audit report triggered, like we get a copy?
And yes. And that doesn't accelerate the process. It's always due on the 31st. This has nothing to do with, we know audit is due.
Okay.
This is just saying we need it in on time.
Okay, so that would be the compliance piece that you're talking about. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Brad, ma'am, you have the floor.
So remind me, Mr. Manager, thank you, Mayor, remind me, Mr. Manager, since the budget process was a while ago now. Let's say.
It's been that long ago.
It feels like it was. Let's say the school board has, the school system has $10 million.
Okay.
And seven of it, according to this ordinance, goes into the CIP fund.
Yes, ma'am.
That remaining $3 million, we have the option of also letting them transfer that in or.
Not.
Not. So if not.
It goes back into the general fund.
Okay, general fund. And then gets reappropriated in our, per other.
And just become fund balance and we'll deal with it during the next budget.
Okay.
That's what was, that's what was happening before, before we had this.
We didn't have numbers before.
We didn't have numbers and we didn't have a place to put it. So it was always going back to general fund. But this allows, takes away the push and pull. It's a savings account of sorts.
Right.
That's exactly what the statute calls it. It's just a place to put it while we're figuring out how to delve it out. So the school board's comfortable that the city's not spending it, the city's comfortable that we know where it is.
Of course, it lays out expectations for both parties. Which I'm grateful for you to recap this for us and remind us since it's new and certainly hope the school board will be receiving the same reminder since this is the first year. It's helpful for all of us to go through that. Where does school fund, CIP funding come from aside from this?
Aside from our general fund?
Aside from this particular fund. So remind me, when they come to us with their budget?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I just don't remember how the CIP part of it fit into.
Please ask the question part of it.
Into the budget. So they bring us their budget and CIP.
The superintendent's needs is what it's called.
Right.
And what we'll figure out is how much of their budget is not being funded by the state or the federal?
Okay.
How much are they looking for the city to fund?
Okay.
So that's what we went through last year. I mean, and their CIP budget is set aside things that they identify as capital projects that they want to execute over the next few years. That's also out of our general fund.
I think what I'm working through in my head is if, let's say that this fund is maxed out, it's sitting comfortably at 21 plus the interest.
Okay.
And they're looking at some massive projects down the road, we have the option there to also designate more CIP funding.
Right, over the course of a year, this has nothing to do with the budgeting process. This is what's left over after the budget has been done. We've gone through the full year of spending and money that didn't get spent that we allocate to the school last year.
Okay, so we'll still be having a.
Same process, got to go through everything. This doesn't modify that process at all. This only deals with, if I allocated to you $80 million, you spent 60. What do we do with that other 20?
Okay, so it's setting those parameters.
Yes, ma'am.
Understood, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Carter?
Yes.
So we're about to follow up, follow up Kitty's line of thought. I know that the new negotiations you were having with the school is going to enter into this on their revenue sharing. Do you have any update on when we're going to start talking more about that process?
This won't have any bearing on that. This is a separate and distinct process from allocating money. This only deals with money that was allocated and wasn't spent. So that, this won't be that. However, we kind of took a hiatus on that over the summer, so we got to pick that process back up. back up.
It'll be dead. Any other questions? Mr. Carter, thank you for the presentation, sir.
You're very welcome. I can anticipate more. Do we have a closed session at the end?
Well, you had legislative initiatives.
Oh, forget about that.
So that's what's on the agenda, sir. So you have the floor, sir.
I should have just stayed where I was standing, but, all right. I have a document that was created from meetings, several meetings, by our council liaison legislative advisory committee. There's several things that we want to make sure that this board is aware of as far as what we think would be our legislative agenda for the upcoming year. A copy of this document will be provided to each of the council members so that you have an opportunity to peruse it at your leisure and provide feedback. Some of the things that we are considering on the state legislative request issues are adding Portsmouth to the Virginia Code, Section 15.2-2286, specifically regarding limited or special use permit exceptions, or use permits automatically expiring upon a change of ownership of the property, a change in possession, a change in operation of management, or the passage of a specific period that you designate. Another issue is allowing retired law enforcement officers to be excluded from temporary detention, to be, to be able to execute, rather, temporary detention orders and emergency custody orders. We kind of get in our current enforcement guys tied up holding people that, where they could be doing other things, so that's a request that we're signing on to. We're also requesting legislation creating a Class II misdemeanor for leaving firearms and an unlocked vehicle. We're requesting legislation authorizing trained special conservatives of the peace and technicians to employ by localities to review and certify photo and video traffic violations. We're also requesting legislation amending the current photo enforcement authority specifically for stoplighting and speeding infractions to address the increase in business day reviews of violations. Currently, it's 15 days, and we're asking to expand that to 30 days. State public policy support statements. First one is support for law enforcement funding renewing the commitment to the 599 program, which provides vital financial assistance to local police departments. And we're also signing on to support granting authority to the Virginia Alcoholics Beverage Control Authority Bureau of Law Enforcement to act as the primary law enforcement entity for reporting purposes. Also included in the state package would be budget requests for Prince Street Transmission Main Project Phase One and Two, $16 million, sanitary sewer pump station rehabilitation of $22 million, and Portsmouth Homeless Shelter, total of that is $17 million. We currently have a $9 million funding gap. That is it for those state things that we're looking to pursue. However, there are a couple of federal initiatives that we're asking for.
Mr. Carter, can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
About the Portsmouth Homeless Shelter funding gap?
Yes.
And I think I talked to you about this this week. Can you just help bring us up to speed? And it's okay if you don't know right now, I can get the report back, if you may need. Where we are in that process, because I know you're saying here, we have a $9 million funding gap, right?
Right.
So I assume that's $9 million funding in order to complete the project.
To complete the project. That doesn't mean the project didn't start already. We're moving along, that's it. But, and it's in the design phase now. But that, we're, if we can get the money now, that means we don't have to kind of come up with money to figure out how to make that happen. But the project is moving along.
Thank you, sir.
The two items for the federal legislative request is a request for a congressional study of payment in lieu of taxes program. Absolutely, we'd like to be able to expand that in our personal situations. And an overpass grade separation, federal fund to study addressing this matter in Portsmouth because of our train situation here, how can we mitigate some of the impact of trains in our, in our local area? That is it for those items that we have as a group determined was the right things to put on the table. Absolutely, we're asking that this body review those items. Again, you'll get a copy of this document so that you have it for your own review, but we'll need your feedback pretty soon if there's anything that needs to be modified.
And if I could add one thing, a really important program is the CBDG program. There's been some talk at the federal level that they, they may want to get rid of that program. I can tell you from talking to all of the other mayors in the country and being a part of the U.S. Conference of Mayors, we support supporting the CBDG program. It hasn't been funded or increased funding in the last 40 years, which is, that's not a good thing. But as you know, CBDG funds do a lot in our local community to help us offset costs, particularly for underserved citizens. So that's critically important that you ask people and we contact our representatives to make sure that, you know, our voice is heard on the CBDG.
Yes, sir, that is absolutely a very important program, and it allows us to help with homeownership-
Yes.
In our local communities also.
Councilwoman Thomas.
Thank you. I had a chance to look through this earlier, and great work from the legislative committee and Ms. Sherri Neal-
Sherri Neal is the one that did that.
Yes, for putting this together and just always keeping us informed. One thing I didn't see, I don't know how to, I've never gone through this from beginning to end yet, but one thing I think would be of interest for us to also push in our legislative package, since we just recently had the Virginia Mommy Bus Legislation Pass dedicating funds to maternal health in Virginia, maybe pushing for Portsmouth to have some of that funding allocated for maternal health. We meet a lot of the statistics that are above state average to kind of monitor and implement some programs, and I think Portsmouth would be a great site to push, a pilot site to push for some of that funding that's from that Virginia, from the Virginia Mommy Bus Legislation. I would, I don't know how to phrase that in here, but that's something-
Ms. Neal, we'll, Ms. Neal will look at that and see if there's a way we can modify the language to get it appropriately fit. Just moving on my soapbox for a moment, I was surprised to find out that there's no place in Portsmouth for a young lady to actually deliver a baby. Have to go to one of our sister cities to do that. And I think that is absolutely ridiculous for any community of our size not to have a local facility that can do that.
Absolutely.
Working on it, sir.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. So the cover sheet that you were given kind of outlines a schedule. So what the legislative committee needs from you all is feedback between now and the 1st of October. So if you could just-
Write it down, okay.
Write a sentence or two of what you just said and send it to us, then we'll feed it into Ms. Neal and go do the homework to figure out what that means. And then we're going to meet again the 9th of October, once we meet again after that. The point of that meeting is to fold in any comments that we get from you all between now and the end of the month. And then latter part of October, we'll pass this, our legislative agenda along to our general assembly reps, and then ultimately schedule a joint session with them the latter part of November, our November meeting, to go through the details of the, and, you know, the final product, basically.
Thank you.
Councilman Dodson, sir, you have the floor.
I don't know where it got in the process, but the juvenile jail program, I was, under the understanding was going to be part of this. So we've got the money this year from the state that we so graciously got us to rehab one wing of our jail, but I thought we were going to pursue a children's juvenile wing there also, and I thought that was going to be, and whether it got considered or not.
Pursuing, but not via the legislative agenda. So there's more homework that needs to be done before we ask anybody outside the city for fiscal help.
I know, we're just bleeding money with the juveniles right now, bleeding money out of it. I also wanted, I know that I spoke with some of the members of the committee earlier, but I wanted to express my opinion that I really would like to see the Sunshine Law modifications be considered at some future date so that we can communicate better as a group. Right now, it only allows two of us to get together. It'd be nice if we could have it the same as what state legislature has, while we've been restricted and they haven't.
So I think you submitted that to the committee at the outset, and our conclusion was?
Well, I understand, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay. As long as you understand.
Yes, I got, I got the understanding. Thank you, sir.
I'll support you as well.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll also add too that some of the requests that were made, to Councilman Hugel's point, didn't go the route of the legislative agenda, but they were, they're still being attended to through current state programs-
Right.
And grant programs. Not everything made it to that because of that. There are alternative routes.
Thank you, guys, for doing the work.
Good job. Mr. Carter?
That concludes those items for this evening's agenda.
Did you want to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting?
Okay. We'll do that after. Well, but I can do it now.
Well, you can do it now.
Okay, all right. There's several items that we have on the agenda this evening that will require your action, two resolutions, six ordinances, one's for the sale of property that Portsmouth owned in Suffolk to be used for a Suffolk fire station, a Port Host Community Revitalization Fund application for $480,000 for state grant to renovate EDA property on High Street. Summer Foods service program reimbursement, looking to accept $424,733,035 to reimburse, as reimbursement for summer school meals provided to children in Portsmouth. Stop the Bleed Program Grant, that's acceptance of a $40,000 grant to purchase and install trauma kits in city-owned buildings. To reappropriation of a donation for PFRES, that's our Portsmouth Fire and Rescue Group, to reappropriate $5,700 donation from the loan company into our fiscal year '26 budget for the fire department equipment. Operation Stop Grant, looking to accept $500,000 in Oprah Auto Bateman grant to expand the outreach, harm reduction, and treatment efforts. Additional funding for IVE foster care, that's acceptance of a $252,461 grant in state foster care funding to cover expanded costs. Finally, fiscal year '26 VDH funding and service agreement, approves the annual agreement between the Department of Public Health for funding and services for the City of Portsmouth and the Portsmouth Health Department. Those are the items that's on the slate for this evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Carter?
Thank you, sir.
Vice Mayor Moody, sir, you have the floor.
I've got one for our city attorney, actually, on these pass-through legislation here. And I think I've asked this before, and you may have answered before, and if you have, I apologize. But couldn't we approve these under one vote instead of having to do each individual vote on these items?
Please, Senator. Please.
I think that is a better question, I think I did this last time, for the clerk of the court, the clerk of the council to address. There are some procedural concerns about the manner in which that would happen, because remember, we have to give the public the ability to speak on a particular item.
I'm not talking about the ones tonight, I'm talking about the future ones.
Sure, sure, yeah. So there's some logistical things that we have to consider. And Ms. White and I put our heads together and tossed it around, but we can, you know, put together a little note for you and report back on some options and what our concerns are on that, on that point. I hear a lot of say yes in my ear, but as always, I want to give you the caveats, because we have to consider, obviously, the citizens as well, so.
Yeah, I'd like to know why we can't do it, and what can we do to make it happen?
I think the bottom, I will say, we'll flesh out, you really won't save yourself time, because you have to make, you have to make opportunities for folks to be able to speak. And then there's a process for pulling those things out, and then there's a process for, and so you, I think you think you're going to save yourself time, but you may not, so.
Well, it's not only time, it's in pulling the things out. Very seldom, I don't recall anybody pulling an item out on a grant that we're being recipient of.
That's because we're reading them out. But I guarantee you, the minute we're like, actually, we're going to just kind of globally, you know, approve these, that you're going to see more of them. But that's just my guess, but.
And there was a time, and our clerk remembers that, when some of these weren't even on the agenda, going back a number of years ago. So just something to look into.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah. Yes, sir, thank you.
Councilman Hugel.
No, I just wish I concur with Vice Mayor. I mean, a person signs up for speed, we can pull it out of a block, but I concur.
And third.
Okay, we'll get some information to report on it.
Got to vote, get into the work session.
I think it's a good, it's a good discussion to have, and we haven't heard the clerk weigh in on things, and I think it's good to get all opinions before a decision is made.
Absolutely.
That's the democratic process. So that's what we'll be working on there. So we'll take that under advisement. Thank you, Mr. Carter.
You're very welcome. Thank you for your attention and your engagement this evening. I always appreciate that.
Yep. Counsel, we do have a need to go into a closed session.
Mayor, before we do that-
Yes, sir.
I have a liaison report.
Okay, yeah, go ahead. Liaison, liaison report, sorry about that.
So the liaison reports from Personnel Committee, I'm going to be sending a note to all of you regarding a discussion around a budget adjustment for the city assessor. So the city assessor has a one-time need to rearrange the office space for the budgeted hiring that he has, and that rearrangement is going to overextend the budget line that was approved in the current budget. So if you recall, in the process of putting specific goals in place with our appointees, we told our appointees, please tell us things that you need the city council to do for you in order for you to be successful. The assessor came back with this specific item as a need to adjust that budget line to accommodate that one-time ask. So I'm going to send you the details. Bottom line is it's a $55,000 increase on that budget line to cover that one-time expense, but I'll send you the details and then ask you for your input so we can provide some direction to the city manager on what to do about that budget line.
Are we ready, okay? We good?
Other report?
Mr. Carter, go ahead, counsel.
So PPIC also met today, and one item that I found noteworthy was the cruise lines coming into our city. And they were having some communication with making sites activities available to them. So hopefully that will improve with the American lines coming through. If y'all aren't familiar with that, it's nice to see some, the activity picking up. And a published list they had of the dates the ship will be in port from the future.
Twenty-two visits to the Portsmouth waterfront next year.
Yes.
Two more left this year and 22 next year.
Exciting times. Very good.
Councilwoman Bryant, ma'am, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending the PRHA meeting this week, and just wanted to point out that they are hosting their first community day next month, so that is an initiative that they were excited about, so you can look out for some, I'm sure they'll be marketing that. They're also looking forward to our joint meeting in November, where they're going to be bringing us the cooperative agreement that we have with them to discuss. Also, from Social Services, just making you aware that there are, I'm sure you're already aware, but pointing out the fact that there are some changes at the federal and state level regarding funding for the SNAP program and the energy assistance programming, and so that might put pressure on localities to provide resources. And so, there's not really any information there, but our director did point out that that energy assistance programming, as the weather changes, could become urgent, and we have been working to promote food pantries around the city. I know lots of different community organizations have, so that's probably going to continue.
Yeah. And lastly, I wanted to update everyone, the groundbreaking for the new Landing Hotel at Rivers Casino Portsmouth will take place on October the 15th. I believe the start time is 10:00 a.m., and there will be a reception afterwards, so looking forward to seeing all of my colleagues and anyone else who is invited at that monumental event.
Yes, absolutely.
That concludes our meeting, and now we do have a need for a closed meeting. Vice Mayor Moody, could you please read the closed meeting motion?
I move to go into a closed meeting, A pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2 dash 3711, A 7 for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding the city of Portsmouth versus Griff's Restaurant and Sports Lounge and JDF Holdings LLC. That's Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 25001466-00. And city of Portsmouth versus Swenson Restaurant Group and all, Portsmouth Circuit Court Case Number CL 25001599-00. And B pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2 dash 3711, A 6 for the purpose of discussion of the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where, if made public initially, the financial interests of the governmental unit would be adversely affected, specifically regarding an unsolicited proposal received under the PPEA.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
Dr. Dodson?
Yes.
Mr. Hugo?
Aye.
Mr. Moody?
Yes.
Ms. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Tillitt?
Yes.
Mayor Glover?
Yes.
Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned, we will reconvene at 7:30, 7:30.